We were a little late. I got a meeting in the back room with Honeywell, so we'll continue this and we'll call this meeting to order. If I get on the right page here, there we go. We'll observe a moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wheaton.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers' comments? Are there any councilmembers' comments this evening? Yes, here.
So, I received the email about the joint meeting, the city schools and college, and one question, how was the agenda going to be set? Because I know we had talked about formatting for that, but how, what's the agenda?
There is not a particular agenda. It's my understanding, it was basically a meet and greet and the start of conversations for future collaboration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Yes.
We had our sled race. It was wonderful. I entered a cardboard vehicle. It was called a City Council, and it was a bus. It had windows on it, and I put everybody's smiley face on it.
Do you have photographic evidence, Councilmember Barnes?
A black marker would say. Also, I'm on a tour of the historically black churches in Albion. We're trying to increase the membership of the Albion Historical Society to bring the historic African-American churches into the fold of the first presence of the African-American experience here in Albion. The first African-American on record was here in 1850, and there's some situations that we're trying to use to bring our community together in a collaborative way. And there will be more following in the future concerning this endeavor. Thank you.
Yes, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just another announcement, anybody who's watching or anyone here, about the Build Albion Fellows program at Albion College. We will be extending a free tuition room and board to Albion resident students who've completed three years in the public schools in exchange for some work-study during the summer, full-time employment, and then opportunities for community-building projects. So, I would ask if there's anyone in the community who knows of a student that would qualify, to please have them contact me at the college or to contact the admissions office at the college. And the other thing I would ask for folks in the community is that I'm working very hard to try to find connection points for our students so that they might be able to inform our college about the goings-on in our city to be part of a solution of, to some of the issues that face our community and our college. And one of the components of the Build Albion Fellows is that students will be actively involved in community activities, and so I'm interested in hearing what people might have to say about what some of those activities might be as we try to connect the college and the community in more tangible and meaningful ways. So, again, you can reach me at my home phone number at (629) 5405, or through email at afrench@albion.edu. And thanks so much.
Holland Park now has a Facebook page, Transform Holland Park, and it started by Ms. Maggie Lulu and Ms. Leslie Dick. And so you can go on there and see some of the things we're going to be putting more on it about things that's going to be done at the park. Last Friday, we had a meeting where we were trying to get things finalized on the first section of play material that we're going to put there for the little kids. So, this Friday, we'll be finishing that up. And so, we hope to start in May getting groundwork ready so we can start to get the playthings put on there for the kids.
Thank you. Bill?
After the snow that we had this past weekend, I wish to commend the snow removal crew. They have done an excellent job of what they had. I know they started late. I had just one person on my precinct call me and say they haven't got my street yet. I says, "Well, Nick, your street is a basic secondary street. You do the primaries first." So, everything looked pretty good this evening, and I think you've done an excellent job.
Are we done? Jim?
No, we are done.
Okay. Then that means my phone will stop ringing.
I was going to say-
Because I got more than one.
Yeah, so, aye.
For those who don't know me, my name is Jim Leonardson, Director of Public Services for the City of Albion. Just for the community, I didn't really realize, I've been with the city a lot of years, and I didn't really realize, but we have just short of 50 miles of public streets in our community, major and locals. That doesn't include the parking areas or the alleys that we also have to maintain. So, we're doing our best, given the limited resources that we have. So, I appreciate your comments publicly. I would also like to thank the Department of Public Services, both the Public Utilities and the Public Works Divisions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a call this afternoon, and they were very pleased because you all got right out and took care of it. And the lady she called, and she said, "I didn't know they were going to be so quick." I said, "They were very efficient."
That's one problem we have. It's a communication thing. People don't understand. Jim, when you say we have 50 miles, that's 50 miles one way. Remember, we plow both ways, you know? And there's different types and styles of snow that we get. When you get a constant snow like we have, you can't take a crew of eight guys and run them 24/7. There's no sense wasting the time of the equipment, the man-hours, to make it everybody tired. So, what they tried to do is open up what we call our 94-99 range, along with our major, major streets. That's if you get that far, at least we can get ambulances and fire crews and things like that out to that point there. Everything from that point is, if it continues to snow like it did, we go back and we hit them again. We're sorry that we can't do every street every time, because we just don't have the hours or the manpower to do so. So, just be patient. They'll get to you. Unfortunately, a lot of you already done your driveway because you had time, and they always give you that little sweet extra bump there to go back out and finish up. But just be patient. Some of them are new. They've never done it before. It's the first time behind front plows for many of them, so it's a whole different ballgame. But I thought they'd done an excellent job for what they have to work with in the time period, and like I said, that's a lot of hours standing at a windshield watching snow. We commend everybody that does their best, and I commend the people that stayed off the street like they were asked. There were very few that I saw on the street that were causing problems. They cause more problems than anything when you leave your vehicles out in the road. So, job well done. Presentation tonight, we just got done with it in the back room. That's why we were late, from Dick Williamson from Honeywell. I was just, do I, could we take and possibly take E, the discussion and approval for City If I could get a motion to move that right under his presentation, I think you were just going to do a short one for us? Just to-
Support.
Moved and supported to take E on the agenda? And I just want-
So, move it to...
I'm going to, if I can, what I would like to do is let him do a small presentation of what we talked about, then we'll go underneath the-
Could you move that?
Item for individual discussion, move it up to A.
Yeah. B. We got to approve the minutes first.
Yep. Okay?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Need a vote.
Yep, I have a motion and-
And a second.
Second, so roll call vote to move that, please.
Some move, or, sorry.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed, yes. And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, we're going to move E to B. Am I correct?
Yeah. No. Yeah, because you have to approve minutes first.
That's A under Section 8, though.
Oh, it's A under Section 8.
Yeah, but the item-
Okay. I'll get to it right after Dick.
It's the sent area.
All right. If you would.
Like, flip it to the back side.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to come, again, before the City of Albion residents, as well as your honorable body. As I mentioned, my name is Dick Williams. I'm the Government Market Manager for Michigan for Honeywell. In my career with Honeywell, 35 years, I've been blessed to be able to do almost 400 public buildings in what we call performance contracting. Some of your neighbors that we've done is Calhoun County, City of Battle Creek, Ypsilanti, Lenawee County, City of Lansing, Lansing Center, if any of you have been there for any conferences, Hillsdale County. We've done a lot of projects. We just got Jackson County approved. But today, what I wanted to do is just share some exciting results that we achieved for the city with our program, which is called a performance contract. In 2008, we worked with some of your predecessors, some of the elected officials, including Mayor Domingo, was the mayor at that time, Councilman French, as well as Councilwoman Kraus was on council at that time. They approved us to do an energy efficiency program whereby Honeywell guarantees energy savings and operational savings for a 15-year period. We started the guarantee in 2011, and the guarantee will last until 2026. So, to date, we're two years through the guarantee. The results are, our guarantee that we're guaranteeing every year is $145,000. So, year-to-date, we should be at $290,000 of savings. We actually, our actual savings has been $433,000. So, we did $142,000 better than what we guaranteed, and that's a good thing for the city and it's a good thing for Honeywell. When we did the project, some of the things we did was, it's visible to the community is, all the streetlights are now LED, which is energy-efficient street lighting. That saved money in energy, as well as operational costs, because LEDs last for, you know, 15, 20 years, whereas the lights that were in there were being changed every two to three years in the balance. So, that saved a lot of money in operational costs, as well as energy. The other big project that we did was the wastewater treatment facility, which is a conglomeration of many buildings over there, and a process that cleans the water. The process that was utilized before was a chemical-based process with motors. We converted that to a biological process, and we were able to not only save a lot of energy out there, but we were also able to save a lot of ferrochloride chemical savings. That's one of the reasons why we've been doing so well. It took us about a year or so to work with the staff there, and Mr. Jim Leonardson has been awesome to work with, and his staff out there. They've been very open to work with us, to how we could gradually work together to get more savings in ferrochloride. The next opportunity for the city would be if the city is interested. When we bid out the original projects, we contemplated doing this building in City Hall. At that point, they wanted to just do the first phase to prove that we could do what we said we were going to do, and then see if you wanted to move forward with this facility. This facility improvements would be changing out all the windows, changing out the heating and cooling systems, changing out the lighting systems, changing out the water plumbing systems, and things to be more energy-efficient. It'd be at a cost, depending on if you go geothermal or conventional heating, cooling system, somewhere between a million and a half to $1.9 million. If your council would be interested, if you would authorize us to do the Phase 2, we would have, I would have my engineer go back out for rebidding all these projects and, you know, try to do this as Phase 2, but we would need your blessing to be able to do that. So, with that, I'll open it up if there's any additional questions. I'll also let you know that I've been in a conversation with your new City Mayor and Manager Cheryl Mitchell, and Mrs. Mitchell's been very good to work with, and if you want to go through her, I can go through her as well, whatever the council pleases, so.
Okay. Bill?
Thank you. You mentioned LED lights. Is that just downtown only? You did that?
Yes, just downtown.
Just the main street?
The lights that you owned.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, when we get to that item, that's just to allow you all to do a RFP, right? Okay.
In relationship to that, if the RFP were let in, the City Council decided they did not want to go forward, for whatever reason, is there any obligation financially to the city?
There would be, the only would be the engineering cost, you know, for us, for us to do that, if, you know, the city would decide not to move forward with anything, whatever his, my engineer Drew's time was, to basically hold bidders' conferences, meetings, and then, and rebid the project to walk contractors through and that stuff. Basically, the design has already been done before. We would just be reconfirming that design again, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Andy?
Do we need to get some input from our treasurer about our debt before we make this decision? And whether or not we can get a bond, and whether we can get a rate on that bond that we can afford and make a reasonable assumption that can be paid back and all that?
We went up for a bond. Our bond rating was really good, wasn't it?
I just was wondering, you know, before we say yes on this RFP, I just, we just need some-
He just wants financial information fired to us, giving you the okay.
Right. That's what I'm just saying.
You know, I mean, it sounds reasonable, don't you think?
I can understand.
If we don't do it tonight, is that imperative that if we-
No, I, we, we're, my mom always taught me that anything worth having is worth waiting for, so.
Okay.
I understand.
All right. And I understand the financial end of it. We would hate for you to, you know, go through it and then find out that we couldn't do it and waste your time and our money.
Yeah.
Okay? Yes?
I have two questions now that we've opened it up. I was ambiguous to this because I was the councilman at the time. My question in the first meeting was really, who's paying and what would be the funding source on the books? It was stated that it was coming under some type of debt ceiling. When you guys do come back with the financials for the public's sake, can we clearly identify who's paying for this and the funding source on the books?
Absolutely. We would, we would work with you, you know, to get that nailed down.
All right? All right. Sounds good, Dick. And we'll-
That means we table.
We can do that, instead of moving it from E to B.
Yeah. So, I move that we table the-
That's not going to be a problem. If you're going to make a motion to table that for further financial-
I'm sure we're just dotting i's and crossing t's. I just want to-
And-
Hang on.
Sure we would know. Tom, are you still here?
Yes.
Could you have that information by?
First meeting in March.
Would that be too late?
No. Yep. That'd be fine.
Okay.
We'll be back in, come first meeting in March, so.
I think at that point, the one thing that we need to make the decision, one of the things we may need to make the decision about is the geothermal versus the other type-
Yes, exactly.
I'd like to know a little bit more about the construction part of that, because I heard you mention something about parking lot construction.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah.
If I could-
Sure.
I think we need that, especially when you started talking about some of the things that could be done by the river and that type of thing. I think before we make any decisions on that, we need some more information.
Sure. So, would you like us to come early again, like we did last time, so we could have some discussion to answer all your questions on that?
I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure that extent.
I think that's going to be a mixture of what's on agenda. I mean, if we have a very limited agenda first week in March, then-
Right.
Then having the whole public here in this big, open space, people can ask questions of the, from the community, get their input.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do another early one. I would do it at the council meeting itself.
Great.
So, let's plan on the first one in March.
Fantastic.
The third?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Andy, you want, I'm sorry.
Just wait to get it.
You tabled it, right?
No. I didn't.
I made a motion to-
Postpone.
Just table on that? Yeah. Yeah. Support. I make a motion that we table this till the first week in March.
Okay.
When we have more information.
March.
Does that need a second? I don't think-
Yes, support.
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Okay.
See you in March. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dick. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper protocol and decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening from our audience? See none. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes for January 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? It passes. Items for individual discussion. Boards and commission appointments to reappoint, Jim Noble reappointed to the Building Board of Appeals, term to expire January 1st of 19.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Jim is on the board. B, request for approval of Resolution 2015-04, reconstruct West Derry Street from the Findley Road to South Albion Street?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Jim is on the board. B, request for approval of Resolution 2015-04, reconstruct West Derry Street from the Findley Road to South Albion Street?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Yes, Bill?
Is this a total, I think I read it, total reconstruction?
Yes.
From gutter and everything?
Yes.
And all the water lines underneath?
No. No, no, no. I, I'm not sure if there's, I know there was something bad down by the old hospital one time, but I think that was all repaired. I think when we done the first layer down through there and it went bad, I thought we done some repairs, but I know it does consist of sidewalk, curbs, and street. Am I correct? I don't know about any of the castings, drains?
Yes.
Okay. So, no, unless they break something in the process.
I am so glad to hear. I got six calls last week.
That you might refresh your memories on the back page and outline associated with it.
Okay. It's your typical contract for mobilization, all the way down to the restoration, which is the traffic maintenance controls, the undercutting, the subgrade, the soil erosion, masonry, concrete structures, sidewalk removal, curb and gutter removal, and this is only where is needed. It is not 100% all the way down. It's where as needed. So, this one here came out May 14th of 2013, was, was this the estimate? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Right around $880,000. And like I said, it was valve boxes like normal, drainage structures and things like that. So, it's your typical bid or typical reconstruction for this street from Albion to Findley. Yes?
That is understood, but now that, that direction of traffic will go down by the cemetery and then come down Erwin Avenue, now won't it?
It depends if they're doing half and half, or are we going to reroute them all together? I don't, I haven't heard.
My understanding is, is that they're hoping to wait till the school season is completed, and they will probably shut the entire thing down and reroute them down Erwin Avenue.
Okay.
It's a total reconstruction, so my guess is they're going to want to do all that at one point.
Yep.
There's one thing I would ask, it's a public road, but Carr brothers, there's a lot of trucks down through there. I don't know if you could ask them to not do that? You can ask.
Well, like I said, with the, the way it's configured, there's not a lot of ways to go, so we're going to have to. But we'll maintain Erwin Avenue the best that we can during that period of time. So, yes, Lynn?
Jim, you're saying it's not going to start until June at least?
We're hoping that we can, or begin starting to stop the city school, there's a bus traffic in that area. Far as I know.
Is there some way that you can notify the people in Lincoln and Oak Meadows? I, I've been, all, all last week, I've been getting several calls, you know, about, and I know how it is, because when I go that way, I know how it is, and, and most of the calls are coming from Oak Meadows. So, is there some way the office could post something out there so that the people would know? And I keep telling them, you just got to be patient. It's coming. But I didn't know exactly when, too, so then they'll know.
Everybody, everybody will be told, and it will be no different than any other construction going on when they do it. They'll get you in and out in the safest, best way that they can, so. Okay? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request for approval of Resolution 2015-05, does- The street administrator for MDOT. What did we do there? Oh, this is your contract, isn't it, Jim?
To appoint Jim Leonardson as director of-
Right. Designation of street administrator for MDOT. Yes.
So, support.
Moved and supported. Questions? It's our typical MDOT contract that we do every year, so. No questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wheaton?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. D, request approval of Resolution 2015-06, grave opening fees. That was in our budget, and it got left out. Is that what happened?
Right.
Any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. D, request approval of Resolution 2015-06, grave opening fees? That was in our budget, and it got left out. Is that what happened?
Right. If you recall, we were reviewing some of the fees, and one of those that were added was relative to the interment and disinterment for cremains using an urn vault. So the fees that were inserted in the budget included the Monday through Friday. What we had not included were those fees associated with Saturday and Sunday because there are some additional overtime hours. So this resolution would accommodate those fees being inserted.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes.